Let's get started. First thing I want to do is welcome everybody to the public meeting on redistricting. The members of the redistricting committee are all sitting here. First, what I'm going to do is ask the Chair, Senator Trump, to recognize the Senators, and then I will recognize the delegates, and then we will get started.
Okay, very good, thank you. Bobby Lee, thank you very much, and again, welcome to everybody who's here tonight. We have a number of members of the West Virginia Senate and the House of Delegates who are here, and I have the high honor and privilege of representing the Senators who are attending tonight's hearing. First, I lost where he is, Senator Mike Caputo. There he is, Mike, raise your hand. Mike's come down from Marion County, from Fairlawn. We have Senator Glenn Jaffrey's with us at the head table. Both of them are on the redistricting committee. We have also Senator Eric Tarr is, there he is raising his hand. Senator Eric Tarr is the Chairman of the Senate Finance Committee and represents Putnam, Mason, Jackson County.
And Rome.
And Rome. And we have our two host Senators with us tonight. We have first, we'll get Senator Stallings, who represents all of Logan County and Boone County, and come on up here, come on up, and I'll give you the mic if you want to say a welcome and hello to, but first of all, thanks for hosting us here tonight.
Charlie, thank you, and thanks to the members of this committee. This is a hard-working committee, they're going all throughout the state to collect information, so, and so on behalf of the wonderful citizens of the 7th Senatorial District, welcome to the 7th District and 23rd House and several others there, but good to have you down here, we appreciate your thoughtful consideration. You know, I'm old enough and got some gray hair tied around now that I was in, 10 years ago, we did the redistricting, and so, you know, unfortunately, in southern West Virginia, due to its lack of economic diversification, it's lost significant population, so we're going to have to pick up some more precincts, you know? If we had 1.7 million, it'd make the math pretty easy, wouldn't it? You've got 17 Senatorial Districts, so you've got to have around 100,000 people more, you know, so that, and if we lose, we pick up territory, and up in Eastern Panhandle, where they have gained, they shrink, so it's a tough thing, and when, and people that are down this neck of the woods understands that, to, you know, to go, for me to go to Wayne, which is, you know, my town, I go through five Senatorial Districts to get there, and if you live in the 6th Senatorial District, Huntington to Princeton, so you guys got your challenge, you've got your hard work ahead of you there. Thank you all so much for what you do, appreciate it.
Senator Stallings, thank you, and thank you on behalf of all of us for hosting us here tonight. And last but not least, the last Senator we're going to introduce is Senator Rupi Phelps, who is a home Senator. Where is Rupi?
He's a character. Hey, first of all, I want to say thanks for everyone coming out. I think Senator Tarr, we hosted one down in Putnam County, or he did the other night, and I think right now, we probably got more here in Logan than what Putnam County, would you say it?
Oh, no, I wouldn't say it.
No, Paul, sorry, Paul. But anyway, we had a great crowd. Guys, it ain't going to be easy, I don't think we get numbers until, I was talking to Phil a while ago, we won't get numbers until September 30th, so, you know, we just have to wait to get the numbers so we can really see what we're doing. I'm honored to be on the committee, I appreciate Senator Trump being the Chairman of the Senate Committee, and let's get this ball rolling, thank you very much.
Okay, I'm going to introduce the delegates that are in attendance tonight with us. I'll start off with the delegates that are on the redistricting committee. We've got Delegate Nivel, that represents Campbell County and Lincoln County, and also we have Delegate Statler with us today, he come, he came all the way from Oregon down, so really appreciate that. We also have Delegate Evans from McDowell County. We have Delegate Young from Canal, Delegate Pushkin from Canal, Delegate Bridges from Logan, yep, and Delegate Mazazaki from Logan as well. Okay, and we have, I think, the Speaker of the House is with us today, Delegate Roger Henshaw. So, guys, I'm going to hand it over to Senator Trump, let him chair this committee. I want to thank again, everybody for coming out. We're going to keep it short and sweet on our delegates, so we'll give it over to you.
Okay. Thank you very much, Delegate. We are, again, excited to be here tonight. The process that we're involved in and getting ready for occurs every 10 years, and it's a requirement of the West Virginia Constitution that in the year following a decennial census, when we get the data, the census of the United States and the census data for West Virginia, the legislatures required by the Constitution to redraw the districts in which delegates to the State House, the House of Delegates, State Senators, and our Congressional Representatives are elected, and that's, that's going to be happening this year. We don't have the data yet from the Census Bureau, it's frustrating to a lot of us because the, the public, the public law that applies, the federal law, is that the census data is supposed to be provided to the legislatures of all 50 states in April of the year following the census, and they haven't given it to us yet. The best information we have at this point is that the Census Bureau is going to provide it to the 50 state legislatures at the end of September, and we're told that there will be a public release of data available mid-August, so a couple weeks away. But we have maps here that show the current configuration of Congressional Districts, House of Delegates Districts, Senate, State Senate Districts, and then here on the bottom, we've made in large the districts that relate to and encompass Logan County. And so, we're delighted that you all would host us tonight, we're especially grateful to the delegates and Senators who represent this area, and so, the purpose of this is a public hearing, our purpose is to hear from you. We want to hear your comments, your opinions on any of, any of what's over here, Senate Districts, House of Delegates Districts, Congressional Districts. It's already been determined, unfortunately, that West Virginia will, for the next 10 years, have its Congressional delegation reduced if I want. We're going to go from three to two Congresses in West Virginia, and that's, that's hard because for a small state, we like having, you know, strong and numerous representation in the, in the Congress, but we're going to be asked, asked to and required to divide the state into two Congressional Districts instead of three for the next 10 years. So, we've got, I'm guessing, that's a dozen, maybe a little over a dozen people who've signed up to speak, and what we're going to do is, we'll just, I'll call them out, I'll do the best I can with the names, I see that some of you have better penmanship than others, but we'll, we'll make it through, and hopefully I'll get close enough with the names, and I'll apologize in advance if I mispronounce anybody's names, but we are here to hear from you. And so, what we're going to do is, if people will, we'll invite you to the podium at the microphone there, and there will be a timer, and based on the number of people, I think what we're going to do is just put the red light on people at five minutes, and then move on to the next one, and we'll be happy to hear your comments, opinions, views, anything you want to share with us. Let me say also, at the outset, I hope everybody got a copy of one of these brochures that were being handed out outside the room. There's some general information in each of these about redistricting, but importantly, there's the Legislature's redistricting website, we have established a website and an email address, and we're inviting comments, not just here loud and in person, but from people who want to submit comments in writing, they're all going to be preserved and made available to everybody who serves on the redistricting committees of the House and the Senate, and ultimately, the whole Legislature, all the members of the House and Senate, whether they're on the committee or not, because the process is, once we establish maps and a plan, it, it is, it goes through normal legislative process in the form of a bill that has to be passed by both Houses and the Legislature and signed into law by the government. But, we have the capability, we think, nobody's done it yet that I know of, but we have the capability through this legislative website for people to submit, if they are interested in doing it, their own maps, their own maps and plans, and if you're inclined to do that, we're going to post them, make them available, not just to legislators, but to the public, for people to look at, to comment on. I think all of us, both parties in this process, from all around the state, want this to be an open, transparent process that is interactive and involves the citizens of this state. So, with that, anyway, keep these, and if you find yourself at some point later with an idea or something you think that would be useful to us, please feel free to share, send it to us. Okay, the first speaker, the first person who signed up to speak, I met when he came in, he signed up first because he was the first one here, I think, and that's Bobby Lee Mines.
We've got to send this for a tall person. All right, hello everybody, my name is, forget this mic. My name is Bobby Lee Mines, and I'm from Logan County, West Virginia, and I came here to represent my county. I feel like it's only fair that.
You want this?
You want this?
You want to take this one?
Yeah.
There you go.
Thank you.
That one, that one would seem like it was working okay.
Okay, everybody, so, I'm here to talk for, as a member of Logan County, and I'm looking at this district map that is being presented, it's, it's, it's a mess. I feel like the district lines should encompass the county lines that we've already agreed upon, and it's ridiculous that somebody from another county can run in Logan County and represent these citizens in a certain section of Logan County and live outside of Logan County. You do not hear about, you do not see this on the national stand, you do not see this, let's say for instance, nobody from Kentucky can come to West Virginia and say, "I want West Virginia votes," so why can't it not be the same way here in Logan County, where only people from Logan County can get votes from Logan County? I look at the map, it's very preposterous, it, it's a wall, and the presentation is very poorly presented, I feel like they could have done a great, a better job with presentation, their flyers. They give us the current district lines in the flyers, but they don't give us the proposed district lines that they want to push in the flyers. If you're sitting in the back, you have to squint your eyes to see these maps up here that they want to propose to you, that will be your district lines, and I feel like they should have done a little bit better work with their presentation. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Here, Bobby, go ahead, bring it.
Hey, Bobby, that's current district.
Yeah, that's current, that's all.
Okay, that's current.
That's not proposed.
Okay, so, somebody tell me this is proposed.
No, no, we don't have no.
The lady outside told me this is proposed, so, thank you.
Bobby, thank you very much for your comments, we're grateful for those. Just a point clarification, we haven't started to draw any maps for the next 10 years yet, and what you see here are the maps that have been in place for the last 10 years, again, Congressional Districts, we have three now, we're going to reduce to two, House Districts, House of Delegates Districts, and then Senate Districts, and then this is the current configuration for here. We, as I mentioned, we don't have the data yet from the Census Bureau that we absolutely have to have to commence drawing maps, but your comments are critically important to us, because when we get it, we're going to internalize and rely on the comments and feedback that we're getting from around the state about how they want their districts to be, so, thank you very much for your comments. The next person who signed up to speak is, I'm saying that's Lacy Workman. Lacy, I'm going to give you this microphone, this seems to work better.
Thank you. I want to talk about the redistricting, you know, and the local part of it. When you look up here, you see possibilities of our, our delegates, our Senate, Congressional, but if you don't get the local parts correct, we have people, and, you know, I can say from Lincoln County, that doesn't, because they're, you know, having to go from five minutes to a 35-minute drive to get to where they're supposed to be. And if y'all want to take and get things done, maybe you're still with County Commission, and see if you can't get something done on that part as well, because you're losing votes and, you know, voter suppression, you know, we can't have that, so, so let y'all work on that, thank you.
Lacy, thank you very much for your comments. The next person who's signed up to speak is Eugene Mazazaki. Eugene, the floor is yours.
I appreciate that. I won't be long, I appreciate what, Mr. Rogers. I appreciate what Bobby Mines pointed out, that we are already divided into counties, why can't we keep our people in the counties, and people that we vote for? I'm going to read what I put down here, it is important that every citizen in the community have the same representative who knows them, their interests, their needs, and their desires. We don't have two mayors in Chattenville that I know of, why do we have four-plus state representatives for Chattenville from four different counties? Doesn't make sense to me. In the future, from what I understand, there will be one delegate districts, which hopefully will be a blessing for our people to have just one person in which to contact when we have issues. The citizens of Chattenville belong together, don't divide them. I want to keep our communities, families, and members, family members together, we want them united and not separated. Thank you very much for listening.
Eugene, thank you very much. The next person who signed up to speak, I want to say is Larry Rogers.
Rogers, yep.
Larry, thank you for coming out. The floor is yours.
My name's Larry Rogers, and I've been a, I'm 71-years-old, been a citizen of Logan County for 71 years, and Logan County, and this is estimated population decrease, we've lost 16% of our population since 2010. Logan County is a rural area, and I want to give you, my concern is the district delegates. Now, for instance, you take Whitman Creek, you go up the right side of Whitman Creek, and it's represented by a Mingo County delegate. You go so far up Whitman Creek, up to Bradshaw Hall, I believe, it's represented by a Logan County delegate, a Logan County delegate. So, I'm getting this right, across the road, this guy's running, he wants to run for House of Delegates, and he's looking straight at over here, across the road, right around him, and his delegate, looking him straight in the eye, and he cannot represent this guy. We're rural people, now that may work in cities up in the north and everything else, but it does not work in Logan County, and we got to do better. Like I said, the southern counties are hurting for representatives, and we need to keep what we got. All these counties down here need to, need to stay the same, they don't need to be divided like they are right now, and Holden, matter of fact, Holden's another place, none of the Holden people can vote for Holden County delegates, and an idea I run for delegate one time, I had lots of family up Holden, you know what? What, I used to put in a sign in the yard, because they couldn't vote for me, they couldn't represent me or anything, so, as a country boy, as an American, we need to keep most of these counties together, honestly, for economic development and just the overall, just being a country people, we need to keep Logan County one county. Thank you.
Mr. Rogers, thank you, thank you very much for your comments. I probably should have said this earlier, I'll say it now, what we're doing, if people see the camera here, we're going to, we're trying to make an archive of all the comments we get from everybody who chooses to sign up and speak at these public hearings, so that your comments that you make tonight will be available to the members of the House and Senate who serve on the redistricting committee, and then all the members of the House of Delegates and the Senate will have access to be able to see and hear those comments, even if they couldn't make it to the hearing, the public hearing tonight. The next speaker on the list is Joel McNeely. And I'm just told that it's his honor, Joel McNeely, as Mayor of Chattenville. Mr. Mayor, welcome, here's the microphone, thank you.
Don't I'm not, not on the honor, there's, first off, want to reiterate what Larry Rogers had said. We are a, one big community here in Logan County, and we're divided up so much that we cannot, I've done census work in 1990, 2000, 2010. It's so ridiculous that even when you get the henchmen books, that you go out and work your area, you'll be working up Whitman Creek, up Holden, up the Town of Man. One side's, in one book, the other side is in another book, and that's ridiculous, now that's where it first begins to get wrong, and this even goes down to whenever you try to apply for federal funds, you try to get your little points that you come out with, that goes in with your census, that happened in the Town of Man to us, and one thing we was working on, this happened to us in Chattenville because of the way it's divided up, I assume it happens up Whitman Creek. Anytime you try to get some of these federal projects, you're divided up because of where the census cuts. Now you're going to take the census, and you're going to break Logan County up even more, possibly, as you say, you don't know for sure what you're going to do, but raise your hands here, how many, how many of you all know more than 10 people who've actually completed the census? More than 10, that you know actually done? All right, yeah, there's not that many. I even offered to help people do, to follow their census, but they didn't want to take the time to do it, so the census is not, is not complete, not for around here, so, I don't know where you're going to get your numbers from, but nothing against Lincoln County, or Boone County, or Mingo County, but living in Logan County, I do not want Lincoln, a representative from Lincoln County as it is right now, his, his territory, their territory, pardon me, they have very little concern for what's in Logan County, just to get reelected, and that's what most of it's all about, we begin with. So, I would like for, as Bobby there pointed out, what's wrong with the counties, every county, just being the county whores. I know it's divided up because of how one has to travel with roads and things of that nature, but we need to consider the individuals too that we're trying to help out, and like Larry pointed out, how do you go up Whitman Creek? One side of it, the west side gets something, and the east side can't get something, all because of the district they live in. I don't want to see that happen, but my little town of Chattenville, and I'm sure the rest of Logan doesn't want that happening, or any of these counties for that fact. I don't think any of them want to be divided up. I see how it's divided now, hard to believe. A lot of thought has to go into that, and I hope the good Lord's with you when you make your decision.
Mr. Mayor, thank you very much for your comments. Yeah, the next name appears to be Bucky.
Becky.
Becky?
Is it Becky?
Becky. Becky, I'm sorry.
I have a map, I want to draw this map.
Thank you, you're going to give you the microphone, and you tell us what you're going to.
Well, it's, I'm kind of representing the Holden area and the Whitman area. We got thrown out, we got thrown out with Mingo County, and Whitman did too. So we want to come back to Logan County, and not Mingo County, and I called Nathan Brown and talked to the children, I like him, he's a very nice man, and I told him, "I want to come back to Logan County." You know, that's simple, but he is a good representative, that's all I have to say.
Becky, thank you very much.
That shows Logan and.
That's the Logan home.
Yeah, but Becky, just one, 10 years prior to that, wasn't Lincolnian, Holden before, HK, yeah, HK, and, I don't know, it's a couple of years. They did, then we got thrown.
For 10 years.
10 years ago, when Jesse Farrell was in, okay, we went to Mingo County. Well, but it's then, I'll say 20 years ago, they put Mingo County up again. Well, people thought such a fit, well guess what, we throw them back over in Mingo County, go back to them. Then we voted again, and we got Holden back. Well, this last time, we got thrown back over there again. So we like to stay in Holden, I can say. I'm a committee woman up at Holden, and for Whitman, and for Omar, but I really want Holden back. Is it so hard?
Well, we, we hope not, I don't know, we, and as I say, we, we don't have the data yet from the Census Bureau, in some degree, the, you know, the numbers will drive how these things go. Ms. Becky, let me ask you, may we keep these that you?
Yes, that's why I gave you the call.
Okay.
That's a good idea for Holden and Whitman, it shows.
Thank you, and I'll just make that invitation to anybody else, anybody who wants to share with us a demonstrative exhibit or a map, we're going to collect them and keep them, and so that people who listen to your comments later can have context and see what you're showing to us, we appreciate that very much. And anybody else who wants to do that, who has something like that, is more than welcome to do so, and again, and I'll say it again, if not tonight, you know, at some point in the future, if you want to submit it online, submit it to us in a digital form, we will take it, take it into custody.
One more thing, it's nothing personal against a lot of these delegates, it's really not, it's just that we want to vote for our delegates. Well, I agree, I could vote for you for, as far as House of Delegates, because you wasn't in our district, so I want our district people back, and we'll give you all your votes.
Becky, thank you. Okay, the next person who signed up to speak is Lisa Ramon. We'll send back to you, the floor is now yours.
I want to thank each and every one of you all for coming to southern West Virginia and hearing our public comments, we know you have something, you had to travel very far, and it's hard circumstances, so I appreciate it, and people in Lincoln County appreciate it, and thank everybody here for coming, I'm very proud of our area, and I'm very proud of each one of you that has an interest in making West Virginia a better place to live. So, I am blessed with good delegates, I'm sorry Mr. McNeely had a bad experience, but I was tortured by a Logan County delegate for years and years, so, and I'm just going to say, I have to speak up for all of my delegates, I pick up the phone, I get a, I make a phone call, and I get a. I pick up the phone, I get a, I make a phone call, and I get a phone call back. They have been the most responsive bunch we have ever had in Lincoln County. So I have to give kudos to all of my team. I feel comfortable calling each and every one of them about any issue that would occur. And Ricky can vouch for that, Zach can vouch for that, and Hamilton vouch for that. So, I think they're all good people, and I just want things done right in our county. So I've got several things to talk about. First of all, let's start with the congressional district. This is scary to me, and I'm gonna lay my papers down. I'm not sure what you all's plans are when we go to two. I don't know if you're gonna split the state like this, I don't know if you're gonna split the state like this, I don't know if you want to zigzag or whatever, but I hope you remember that southern people want to be southern people together. That's the way I feel about it, and I'm sure most people here feel the same way. Nothing against northern people, but you all don't want to be against either, really. So, let's be honest, let's just tell the truth. So, I hope and pray that you do keep, we have much more in common economically, culturally, you know, as an Appalachian, our culture's never upheld, and that really, really bothers me. So, but I really think we need to keep our districts, we've got a great Congresswoman, I love her, and I would like to see her kept in my area, definitely. So I hope when you all do redistrict, that you do keep in mind that maybe this way might be a better way, and I know it's got to do with population, I ain't the smartest writer in the sky. So, but I do hope you remember that maybe we have more in common here than we do going this way, or zigzagging, or however it's going to end up. So, I do believe in single district houses delegates, I think that is the way to go. But I'm proud, how Jordan, I'm very proud of you too, I can pick up the phone and call you too. So, but I do think that our counties do need representatives from the county, because there's so much going on in my county, I can't even keep up with it. Every day, something new, something scandalous, something odd, something strange, so think about mixing two or three counties like that. I feel sorry for some of these people having to deal with issues from four or five counties, that's too much. And this was just gerrymandering to me, you know, bringing this, that, and this and that one, and, you know, but I'm not charged. So, but I really think we do need that, because in my county, and just like you said, and other people said, about across the street, and just like Mr. Workman said, it is really messed up. Our county commission really screwed the voters where we live. And in hearts, where I'm from, we've got people so far up One Haller that has to drive to Ranger to vote, and they never really go to Ranger for anything else, and they don't vote. So, our county commission did not listen to the people, and it's a shame, and that is made in hearts, voter suppression. The Senate Senatorial District, I know it's a big district, I'm pretty pleased with it personally, but I mean, I think that it does encompass a humongous area, and it probably does deserve to be looked at, because honestly, Wayne has more in common with Caba County than it does my county of Lincoln. Don't you agree, Dr. Stallings? And, you know, we have more in common, I don't want to lose my delegate from Lincoln and Logan County. Lincoln and Logan has more in common. I mean, there's lots of people where I live, work in Logan County, and vice versa. So I really hope that we keep that, that one straight. So, I appreciate you all letting us have this input, and hopefully you all can work it out to the best way that's better for all citizens. Thank you, Mr. Trump.
Lisa, thank you very much. We appreciate your comments and the specifics, it's helpful to us. And I think, you know, we don't presume to speak for others, but it's particularly helpful for me, because I'm from a completely different part of the state, and I don't know the details of every neighborhood the way the local delegates and senators do. Okay, the next person who signed up to speak is Ken Wilson. Mr. Wilson, thank you.
How's it going?
All right, the floor is yours.
Okay. I just want to reiterate what some of the folks have said about Logan, Lincoln. I live in Chatlinville, and there are people in Chatlinville, and I love this guy, and that one, and her, but nobody's gonna vote against Jack's act if they try to run down there, because you can see, he's wearing orange. He's a Tiger. And he went to school there, and, but we would like to be put back in Logan County. And as far as the Senatorial District, I'm satisfied with that. Stallings and Senator Phillips are great. We don't want the Canola, our district to be pushed into Canola County. I don't want somebody, a senator from Canola County dictating down here, they don't know what's going on. They say they do, but they don't, trust me. But I'm satisfied with that, but I do want to keep Rupi and Stallings where they are in that district. But I would like to see our town of Chatlinville, like everybody has talked about, the mayor, my wife's a recorder down there, works for Joel. That could be good and bad, but, you know, we do want to be put back in Logan County. I mean, I'm right across the river from, you know, and I live in Logan County, and there's so many people down there. Now Zach, I got his seven, I got his, I got hers, and I got Senator Stallings, and I can call them right now. But that's what we need down there, okay? Thank you, Senator Stallings.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wilson, for your comments. The next person who has signed up to speak is Jeff Hargraves. There he is. Mr. Hargraves, thank you, the floor is yours.
I have to confess, when our good friend here was talking about penmanship, that I got a little nervous, because for many years, I was told, and this is no reflection upon my senator, Dr. Stallings, who is also my doctor, but I was told many times I should have been a doctor, not because of my educational background, because my inability to write so people could read it. So, I printed for you, sir.
It's excellent, yours is excellent, and I'm not calling out anybody who's not.
My name is Jeff Hargraves, and I live in Chatlinville. I'm not a native West Virginian. We've lived in Chatlinville now for ten years, and I have to tell you that I have grown to love the people of Logan County. I pastor a church in Chatlinville, and we know a lot of the folks, we've grown to know you personally, and we love being a part of this county. And I also had the privilege many, many years ago, when I was a young man, to teach school, and I taught history, and I learned that government was established in the very beginning for the people. The government wasn't established for the convenience of the government. The government was established for the convenience of the people and to protect the people. And so I just want to parrot the theme of the thesis that has been flowing through the speeches that have been given, and that is, people of Logan County want to be treated like people in Logan County. And again, I have no harsh words towards, Zach is my friend, Rupi's my friend, and Margita's my friend, and, and, and Dr. Stallings is more than my friend. And I would just like to say that, and would plead with the, those who are in charge of redistricting this, to remember, we're people, we're not just numbers counted on a census. These are real people with real hearts, with real lives, who want to work together to make our county a respectable county. So I would just admit that.
Mr. Hargraves, thank you very much, thank you for those comments. The next person who signed up to speak is Ben, I'm gonna say Derosha?
First time I've ever heard a guy on the first line.
Nah, Zach, Zach helped me with it, I asked him first. Ben, thank you, floor is yours.
All right, first of all, can I ask questions to anybody here? Are they all answered?
Well, we're generally trying, I'm generally trying not to do that, because what our purpose here tonight is to hear from you.
Okay.
And that's, that's really what we're trying to do, is collect, you know, and probably, let me just say along those lines, with, you know, we've got a joint redistricting committee that has, I think thirty-some people on it in total, and you're probably gonna get thirty-some different opinions on some things, but, and here's the other problem we have, is, as I mentioned, we don't have data yet, so we really haven't formed opinions and decided anything yet, and the beauty of this, if it works correctly, is gonna be that before we start into that, we're gonna hear from what the people think.
Okay. All right. Well, like I said, I'm Ben Derosha, I'm a councilman for the town of Chatlinville, I worked with Joel, I've worked with Kenny, worked with Jeff, we have another councilwoman back here. I know a lot of people up here, a lot of people out there. I got here when I was five. I lived in four states before that, due to cult. So God allowed me to get here as soon as he could, like he did with Deleg Mezzano. But, you know, I'm gonna try to refrain from asking questions, so I know Eugene's here. I, I grew up with Marko. You all got here when he was in fourth grade. And I, I grew up therefore with Margita. I feel like I could reach out to Margita at any point in time. Is Margita my delegate? No. Zach gets, I went to high school with Zach, but I've known Margita longer. I could reach out to either of you. But when it comes to Logan County, let's keep it in Logan County. I, I got the Golden Horseshoe in eighth grade. I, I don't know how many have the same award, but I know a lot about the state of West Virginia. I know, like was just said, the government is for the people, not just numbers. If you're gonna go by numbers, there's so many people that live north of here, from, basically Exit Ninety-Nine on Seventy-Nine up, and then you got the Eastern Panhandle, which is basically Metro DC, and you got the Northern Panhandle, which is almost certainly Metro Pittsburgh. So anything from Fifty, give or take, south, should be its own district, in my opinion. Like was said, south should be south, north should be north, nothing against you all. But, when it comes to the north, the north knows what the north wants, the south knows what the south wants. When it comes to Logan County, Logan County knows what Logan County wants. Zach, nothing against you, you know what Lincoln County wants. I, I feel like I can reach out to all of you at any given time, though, and you all want to answer my questions, you have the floor, you probably will again, but that's all I got. Thank you.
Ben, thank you very much, thank you for your comments. Okay, the next person who signed up to speak is James Porter. Mr. Porter, welcome.
I thought I could be good.
The floor is yours.
All right, good. Well, I agree with the gentleman just said here, one of the problems you want to have is, hurts people back are talking, especially around Fifty, or across the Newport area. You've got the population, but one of the other things is economics. We're terrible down south, we're in trouble. Most of these guys, okay, and Rupi, and Zach, Doc knows, the southern area, we're in trouble. Orpioid just turns up, we're terrible. So you all have a tough decision how to do this, and the way, the way I'm looking, you want to have to get the, get the geographies correct, get the population correct, like what that's, if you did this, this will be tough, you all in that line, because we don't have a population, we've got the landmass. We've got no places in parts of Logan County and Lincoln, there's nobody there, there's not a local home, nothing, so you won't have a problem dealing with that. One of the things that I want one of you all to consider, or ten of you all, is extending filing period next January, because we're four months late, as you said, you're an April, you're supposed to have census information to us. Extend one of you all filed a schedule, move the filing period, get it close you can made, for the reason, so it does not interfere in interest relation, move it. You all, you all can do that. Because you have four months behind getting that information. One of the things we do need, is all citizens and all state constituents need to know, if they decide to run any public office, where it may be, anytime, but guess what? They don't know where they live at yet. Now, I'm with a group of people out of Tri-Debby. We have petitions, and I know you all here are dealing with state issues, we have county issues. The people in Tri-Debby that think Man does not have a county representative, we have handled and argued with the county commission for the last probably ten years, because of our district, that we don't have a representative. Now, when you go back home, and you cross over top of Chatlinville, that's a part of Man. And where do you get, where the craziness, I may be still in this, I know you're not done with it, that's a county commission issue, that's their discretion to do that. But we have petitions, but we can't file our petition with our county commission until we have census numbers. So we need numbers. But if you decide to run for county commission in my district, sir, you can't file, or you don't know if you, what, if you're gonna be. So extend the filing period so it's across the state at that time. You all can do that, at next, you call special session, do the two rounds. Thank you.
Thank you very much for those comments here. The next person who signed up to speak is Phil, I would say that's Williams.
Excuse me, wait a minute, was Meg really ask people to use the microphone way back here, can't hear?
Okay, and I think those had, Phil, I'm gonna give you the floor, but hold the mic close to your mouth when you talk, so everybody can hear.
Senator Trump, I usually don't think that's a problem, people get angry with this. My name's Philip Williamson, as he said, I'm a resident of Chatlinville. There's not much that I can say that other people haven't already said tonight. Chatlinville, Holden, Whitman Creek, they all seem to be split down the middle. What we really need to look at is our communities, you know, where are the lines going to be for people who live together, who work together, and who know each other? And whether that's north or south, or, you know, numbers. If we actually get the communities all drawn together, then we're gonna have a lot happier voter passing. You all have good, thank you.
Thank you very much for those comments, Phil. The next speaker, and the last among those who signed up to speak, is Mike Pollard. Mike?
Reverend.
Reverend Mike Pollard. Reverend, thank you for coming tonight, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, and thank you for coming. I'm looking around to see some friends from my home area of Man, and I don't see that many, and probably because we're about twenty miles from Man. And there's a certain amount of disinterest, because it seems like anything important that's gotta take place in Logan County, it's gotta take place in Logan, or maybe near Chatlinville. But we'd like for you all to consider coming to Man with some of these things, because we in Man have felt like, in some ways, we have been the dual man of the county for many years. No disrespect to any individuals, but it's just the way it is. And we have a population, as Mr. Porter and some others have said, now think of this map here as Logan County, just Logan County. The way you have it drawn here on a horizontal plane, north, central, southern, makes more sense than about anything that you can do. But in our county, this is Logan County, it's on a vertical axis, north, south, and this is what these folks have all been trying to say. You got folks here, 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 here in the county, running against each other, whereas I have seen some documents that when Logan County originally, in the early years, was districted, it was done this way, especially when it comes to county commission. And as Mr. Porter has said, we had discussions with our county, a person from Man has very little chance of winning a county commission seat, because of the way that it's districted north and south. When this county was originally drawn up, the early fathers had the wisdom to do it this way, because this way you are guaranteed to have a representative from Chatlinville on the county commission, from Logan, which would be the central, on the county commission, and from Man. It would be guaranteed you would have representation. But because of the way that it's gerrymandered now, a person from Man has very little, it's more...
more than about numbers. We keep hearing you say, well, and this is not your, I'm not picking on you, but we keep hearing you say, when the numbers come in, when we get the count, when we get the data. And we know numbers can be manipulated and made to look like, but it's got to be about demographics, economics, multiculturalism. It can't just be about numbers. It's got to have some common sense approach. The way that it's gerrymandered now in the county for a person to run for man for the county commission, he has very little chance of winning. And the folks in man, we know this, and maybe they would have been my team 20 miles to get here. But it's like, and I'm going to close, the dog at the dog track. You all have a nice dog back over in Crossman. The story is told about a man who used to go to the dog track and bet on this particular dog, because it was a winner. And one day, he went to the window to bet on the dog, and the guy at the window told him, said, "I'm sorry, you can't bet on that dog." He retired. And the guy said, "You've got to be kidding me, he's in his prime." So, he went to where they impounded the dogs, and he tapped at the dog. And he said, "Dog, why did you quit? I won a lot of money betting on you, you're still in your prime." And said the dog said to him, "Sir, let me tell you, I've been chasing that rabbit around this track for years, and for the first time the other day, I finally caught it, and I tried to eat it, and I found out it wasn't even real." In other words, it's not designed for the dog to catch the rabbit, it's designed to make him run fast. That's the way we feel in man, Tri-Delphi. When we go to the county commission, we talk about this, we hear, "Well, yeah, you can run, if you're from man, you're welcome." We can run, but we can't win, we're like the dog. We're not going to ever catch the rabbit, because it's gerrymandered so that we can't. And it's not right. And folks in Tri-Delphi and Logan County, I'm a Logan County, I'm all my life, but it's just not...and so, when you all do this thing, these folks, we're not just here, as Dr. King said at the I Have Dream speech, we did not just come here to blow off steam. And we're not going to go back and let things just go back to business as usual. We would like to know and feel like, whether said and done here tonight is going to impact somebody somewhere, we're not just here to blow off steam. And so, my question to you all, you don't have to answer, is what we're doing here tonight really going to matter? Or is this just to allow us to blow off steam? Because we've got a whole lot of steam to blow off, and we can't blow it off in five minutes here tonight. But we, as we said, if we get the numbers for Logan County census, and if they still district it this way, we're like the dog. We can run, but we can't catch the rabbit. We want to catch the rabbit in Tri-Delphi. But this makes more sense than anything. Like I said, keep the north in the north, keep the south in the south. There's been more coal, and I heard you whispering it, Dr. Stoll, there's been more coal severs, money come out of southern West Virginia, and the money goes, and we've seen it over years. It's better now in some ways, but the money goes north. And we down here, our coal mines now are gone. I saw in the paper yesterday or day before, we're going to maybe get $300 million in West Virginia, in the coal-stricken areas. And I saw the breakdown, I didn't see Logan County anywhere. It said just generally, southern West Virginia. It's just like Patrick Morrissey, bless his heart, fighting to get that opioid money and all of these things. But the people who really need it and should benefit from it don't get the help. The money goes to an agency, they say, "We're going to put up a few nice Madison Avenue commercials, pay them millions of dollars, a few commercials on the TV." But the people whose families and lives have been impacted and destroyed by drugs, what do you do for them? The people that need it the most, unfortunately, and a lot of these programs are the ones who get the help the least. Right now, Logan County, we held this state up, as far as I'm concerned, with coal and coal severs. We deserve the best redistricting we can get, and it shouldn't be just about numbers. God bless you, thank you.
Reverend, thank you. Reverend, thank you, and God bless you, and thank you for sharing that. And I'll answer only for myself, but I think, I think it's true for all of us, it isn't just to blow off steam, it matters. I think we're here because we want to hear from you about how you believe these districts should be configured, if there's a better way to do it than what exists now. And so, now, Reverend Pollard was the last one who signed up, but I don't know if this sign-up sheet got pulled away, maybe before, but I'll throw it out, we have a little bit of time. If there's anybody else who desires to speak to us, and share something who maybe hadn't signed up, let's see, is there a hand in the back? Come on up. Mr. Cooper, good to see you again.
I made it to all of the district committees, all of them, 10 years ago.
Well, all right.
And I won't make, but I said, "I can't miss Logan. Logan has a special place in my heart."
All right, Mr. Cooper, let me give you, hold on, I'm going to give you the microphone and the floor here in a second, and we'll put you on the same five-minute clock that everybody's on, but the floor is yours.
Thank you. It's nice to be with the people of Logan County. I live in South Charleston, my name is Thornton Cooper, T-H-O-R-N-T-O-N-C-O-O-P-E-R. I'm an attorney, I'm a native of South Charleston. I've been involved in the redistricting for the last four census, one after 1980, the one after 1990, the one after 2000, and the one after 2010. And been in the court cases, all three of the court cases 10 years ago. So, let's start out with the congressional redistricting, all right? Here's the way I see it. To me, it's not a matter of whether you like your congresswoman, has nothing to do with that. It's what is compact. And here's the way I see it, compactness means you basically want to have a circle. And I would suggest that the members of the committee, before they get the results, just use unofficial results just to play around. If you know how to use a compass, and a, you know, you just, you pick one spot here at Warren Cliff, W-H-A-R-N-C-L-I-F-F-E, I think, which is on the board where Kentucky, Virginia, and West Virginia come together. And you come up here at Hazelton, H-A-Z-E-L-T-O-N, and Preston Town. And you pick one, you put a compass, you start the center of your circle here, and you start the center of your circle here. And you go with the thousand, the million people closest to that, and the million people closest to that, not be more, you know, about 200,000 or 300,000 or more. And if you find a county that's in one circle, but not the other, then make that presumptively in that district, likewise, the other one. And we, because we're not going to know maybe for months. But the logical thing is that this, the tug fork of the Big Sandy River, invert, rotate this map of West Virginia, so this is the bottom. And so, the folks down here, Wayne, Mingo, McDow, the half, the 50% of the people of West Virginia who live closest to that, you put them in one congressional district, and then probably, you put the northern, the eastern panhandle and the northern panhandle in the same congressional district. It has nothing about whether you like Miller, Congresswoman Miller, or Congressman Mooney, or Congressman McKinley, it has nothing to do with that. It has to do with what's closer, and what's a logical community of interest. And then the people in the eastern panhandle, people in the northern panhandle may not think they have a community of interest. But in this case, it's so simple, the way I see it, in terms of compactness, the ideal form for compactness is a perfect circle. So, put the 50% of the population, you know, that's closest to this together, and that is a much more rational way of doing it than, in my opinion, than starting up here and splitting it in half that way. Because if you're going to do it that way, if you're going to do it the other way, you're going to have the Cumberland up in Hancock County, all the way down with Welch and McDow County, and you're going to have Charlestown and Jefferson County, all the way down with Princeton and Mercer County. To me, that just does not, that does not make sense from a compactness perspective. Now, perspective of the delegate districts, when I was involved in litigation 10 years ago, I actually divided Logan County. Logan County in the 2010 census was almost an exact multiple of 1%. It was 1.98%. And I did exactly what the folks have said, you do not split municipalities, if you can, between two different delegate districts. And so, I just went on the map. Now, I understand the lady said she wanted to be able to put the person across the street. You're going to have to draw a boundary line somewhere, you're going to have to make someone unhappy. But the way I did, I just went right down the map rationally, and so, I put unincorporated areas, Chattingville, Henloson, I may be mispronouncing something, Mitchell Heights, Holden, Bourbonville, Mount Gay, Shamrock, and one delegate district. And then the other one we had unincorporated, Wes Logan, Akeville, Amherstale, Robinette, Bruno, Man, Mallory, Logan, McConaughey, and 2101 Stallings, Monaville, Rosanova, and I'm more, and few others. But I'm going to say, here's the problem, though. It looks as if Logan's going to drop below the point where you can put two single-member districts in all of Logan. So, please, please put at least one single-member district in Logan. If you can't have two, at least have one where the people in that part do not have to cross lines. So, that's what I would suggest. And also, I'd like to point out that I went through the census figures for the last, back to 90 years. So, in 1930, Logan had, let me get my screen away, old age. All right, now, I'll be done. If you look at 1930, Logan's population was 58,534, and it was 3.39% of West Virginia's population. In 1950, Logan's population was 77,391, and it was 3.86% of, I was here I was born, that was 3.86% of West Virginia's population. In 1970, Logan's population was 46,269, and that was 2.65% of the state's population. In 2010, it's 36,743, and that was 1.98% of the state's population, which is almost exactly 2%. The, we don't know what, their estimates are saying it's dropped to 38,39. If that's the case, we don't know, it would be somewhere between 1.7 and 1.8% of the state's population, in which case, the logical thing would be to have at least one single-member district that's holding from Logan County, and then, you know, the remainder of the population would have to be combined with someone from another county. Thank you very much.
Mr. Cooper, thank you, and if, I'll make the offer to you, if any of what you were reading from, you want us to keep, our clerk will collect it and...
I'll submit it.
Or you can submit it later. Thank you, Mr. Cooper. Is there anybody else who maybe hadn't signed up, who feels inspired to share something with us? All right, I do, I see a hand up, good. All right, and please tell us your name, and I'll give you the microphone and the floor.
My name is Robin Waters, I'm a councilwoman in Chattingville. And again, mostly what's said is the way I feel too, but I just wanted to voice my opinion on it, because I feel like the more the opinion is voiced, the more we represent our people. And I love Zach, he's been a good representative for us to come from Lincoln County up, but I think that Logan County needs to stay in Logan County, and I think that each county needs to have their own representatives. I feel like every county, you know what your county needs, you know what your county wants, and I just feel that we need to stay in our own counties, and we need to have our own representatives. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for coming out and for speaking and sharing your views. Anyone else? If not, then we'll go ahead, and we'll go ahead and wrap it, and I want to say, first of all, thank you to everybody who came out, and those who signed up to speak and shared information with us. I think this is really helpful for all of us. And, you know, the delegates and senators who represent you know and understand probably a lot already of what you talked about tonight, but, you know, I'm beyond the point in my life where I'm embarrassed by my own ignorance, so being here and hearing from you is helpful to me. You know, we all of us who serve in the legislature have a duty to do when it comes to drawing the districts, and this is, I think, very helpful, to learn about areas in the state where we are not frequently having opportunities to go to. I want to say, I think all of us feel this way, I'm honored to serve with the delegation who represent Logan County and Charleston, and that's the senators, Rupe, Senator Phillips, Doc Stallings back there, and your delegates. You know Zach, Margita, you guys have a great, strong delegation, and well, hand up Michael with Zach, and Rupe, and perhaps let them close this public hearing out. But I'll say again, I'm a broken record on this stuff. Keep your brochure, if you have specific ideas or other things you want to share with us, that website is on there, and the email is on there, and it's not going to get just to the, you know, eight or 10 people who showed up tonight, it's going to be available to the whole joint committee. Thank you all very much.
Yeah, I'll just go off of what Senator Trump said. This is, this is our time as a local community, Lincoln, Logan, some of these other communities to, for your input, and to be fully transparent in the process. So, if you have maps, I've heard some ideas here, if you have things like that, you can get this little form packet, and I think there is a website, yep, and you can insert your map. So, as the one lady gave us the map of the other district, everybody can do that. So, complete input, complete transparency, and we want your guys' input, like I said. Everybody be safe going home, and thanks for coming.
First of all, I want to thank Charlie and the other senators and delegates, and by the way, welcome to Chillicothe Convention Center, I think we've got a great facility down there. Guys, it ain't going to be easy. If any of you would like to call me up, send me a message on Facebook, I'd be more glad to come sit down with you, go over what idea you've got. I don't care what it is, we'll look at it, and then I'll give you my thoughts on it, and then I can take it. If you don't want to submit it, like Zach said on the website, I'll take it over to Charlie and the committees, and let us look at it that way. But we're here, it's open, as Charlie said, it's, you know, we're going to try to make it as transparent. Mike, you're in Blums, but we're listening. I get it, you know where I'm from, I totally understand your thoughts on everything that you pointed out, and I totally agree with you. And, you know, and like everybody, yes, I like seeing Logan County hold, but let me say this, just today, I was on the phone with Jimmy Riston, the second guy in charge of highways, talking about an issue over in Monroe County. So, I don't let my Senate district lines or my old House lines stop me from helping anybody. If you're in the state of West Virginia... If you're in the state of West Virginia, you call me, you know me, I will help you. I'll do everything I can, and I'll shoot you straight. Thanks for coming out.
And, and that's it, so thank you, guys, and God bless you.